Alder?
Madam Mayor. So, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks everyone who came in tonight and testified. It has been very hard for everyone involved and everyone who have been here and who have been affected by this. First of all, I would like to acknowledge all the women who took the courage to come forward. I feel your pain, harm, and hurt. I didn't sponsor the resolution because of my personal commitment to criminal justice system. See, I had the privilege of working at Just Dane for more than three years as a development director. During my tenure at the Just Dane, I saw black men coming in, coming out of prison every Tuesday for crime they haven't committed or for wrongfully imprisonments. Tonight's testimony were hurtful and emotional. I disagree with some of it. One person said, "Society protects abusive men." Yes. But the society does not protect black men. Another person said, "Women are not believed." Yes, women are not believed, but also, black men are not believed. Let me give you a status about the black men in Wisconsin, not dismissing the hurtful and the harm expressed by the women. According to Wisconsin Watch report, one of every 36 black men in Wisconsin is in prison. The report found black people comprise of 40% of the Wisconsin prison population, but just 6% of the state population. You can see that disparities. Secondly, the analysis also examined the disparity in imprisonment rates between black and white people nationwide. Black Americans are imprisoned at nearly five times the rate of white Americans. The report found, and in Wisconsin, the ratio is even higher, 12 times the rate. Advocates for prison reform in Wisconsin were disheartened by the report's findings, calling them depressing and embarrassing. So forgive me if I'm taking my time. Forgive me if I have commitment to be the last person to convict a black man. Forgive me if I need a due process that really needs and provide the evidence. Based on Alder Harrington McKinney, the questions she asked Attorney Haas from point 1 to 7 literally expressed that there was inconsistency. I'm not supporting Aldo Miyatsi. I'm not believing in Aldo Miyatsi. But I made a personal commitment to have a due process, but also to have a valid process that can really have the outcome that we really need. Secondly, I would like to address the council failure to address this matter earlier by adopting the Code of Conduct in 2022. I introduced an authored Code of Conduct. At that time, it was expressed that we don't need to police alders for their behavior. It was too punitive to adhere to the culture of the council to provide a conducive and pleasant environment. It was very toxic. And when we introduced that resolution, it was put on file and later on adapted in a more compromised, which in the beginning it had like council-to-council behavior, council-to-staff behavior, council-to-community members' behavior, council-to-the-media behavior, and council-to-the-staff. All that were thrown out of the ordinance or resolution, and we introduced something like just a compromise. So for that reason, I am not going to support or not support, but I'll be abstaining because I find it's in our hands as a council to have a precedent, to really get the facts. And here, what it is like, you know, if it was hearing, that's our next choice. Perhaps we should have a hearing. If the women came forward and filed a complaint, that's another options. So without dismissing any of the what was shared tonight, I want to express again that I am not in a position, from my heart, to censor Aldo Miyatsi. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington?
I'm going to take my time going through this. The definition for due process is a legal requirement that the government treat people fairly and respect their legal rights when making decisions that could affect their life, liberty, or property. It is a fundamental right in the United States Constitution and is guaranteed by the Fifth and Fourth Amendment. One person who testified tonight created for me a hostile work environment and consistently harassed me. But I did not have the courage to file a complaint. And I'm sorry that I did not do that. I am not on the fence for my support of Charles Miyatsi. He is due process. And I think that that was overturned even before we got the full redacted report. The president of the Common Council had already issued that he was guilty. The man and his commitment to serve his community was not challenged. I see a wayward child placed in foster care, navigating through the system as a young handsome black man, one who had created a false image of what a man should be toward women, entering into one relationship after another, all beginning with bliss and ending in toxic waters. But this censure is not about Charles Miyatsi's service for his district. It's about how he sees and interacts with women. A black man with a broken history that has not faced what is broken inside of him that draws him into similar relationships over and over again. We are not his therapists, nor should we be his jurors. There is always two sides to every story. Justice should look at both sides. In this case, the charges against Aldo Miyatsi were revised because the evidence showed that there was no hostile work environment between his accuser and himself. I read 90-plus text messages inferring quite the opposite for many months. For many years, his life's recurring theme with women ended the same physical attraction and ended in toxic relationships for both sides. There is need for healing and harm reduction on both sides of the relationships. I believe he is a good and decent man. I believe that the women he is drawn to and who are likewise drawn to him are good and decent people. But whatever draws Aldo Miyatsi into and causes these good individual relationships to remain or start healthy and remain harmful relationships, that is not for me to decide. That is not our jobs to figure out. Professional counseling is needed. But this censure is outside of what should be considered. The process. There was a complaint that violated APM 3.5 workplace misconduct. There was a complaint filed. There was an independent investigation. The findings first were revoked or changed. I read 90-plus text messages that were presented in evidence supporting a professional and social interaction between the complainant and Aldo Miyatsi. The original findings of the independent investigation was reversed. That is what the process dictates. It was biased. Aldo Miyatsi was tried and convicted not by actions of the complainant's charges. Let me go back. I'm getting ahead. Aldo Miyatsi was tried and convicted but by the judgment of oh, okay, I know what it is. Aldo Miyatsi was tried and convicted not by the actions of the complainant's charges, but by the judgment of the council president and the council members who signed onto the resolution. If others outside the council felt that litigation was a viable option, Charles Miyatsi should be charged in court. From a person who does not live in his district, urging him to resign immediately so that all involved can begin to heal and so that all residents of Madison can be effectively represented by the Common Council. Consider this. Aldo Miyatsi also needs time to heal. He has done an excellent job providing service to his constituents. They believed in him when they elected him over an incumbent. This council has successfully beaten him down. At no time did the mayor, chief of staff, or anyone in the administrative authority have counsel with him when such allegations first flourish. I stand with Aldo Miyatsi because I believe that there are two sides to each story, and we only heard one side. I have a right to say this because I am a survivor. And my healing did not start until I could look at my survivor and say, "I forgive you," even though that person never admitted what he had done. But I had to do that to move on and to release the hate that was in my heart and the guilt that was in my spirit. I stand beside this man because I asked him one question. I said, "When you look in the mirror..." He loves his children. And I asked him, "When you look in the mirror and you see your daughter, what kind of man do you want to be in your daughter's life?" And my challenge to him is that you have to treat women the way that you would want someone to treat your daughter. And so I stand by him because I believe in that. I'm a person of deep and abiding faith, and I have to see the good outweigh the bad. And I'm working to make sure that he continues to look in the mirror and ask himself. The question is, "How am I showing up in this event?" So I will not be supporting this sanction. I cannot support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
I'm just gonna cut to the chase. So the conclusion of the investigation in this investigation was that from one complainant, it did not constitute unlawful harassment or sexual harassment, and it did not meet the definition of a hostile work environment. The second complainant, they could not sustain the findings of harassment, hostile work environment, or sexual harassment. And then in the final one related to Aldo Bennett, in the supplemental report, as you all read, it said, "After reviewing new evidence, it concluded that no violation of APM 3 to 5 could be sustained regarding Aldo Bennett." That's the conclusion of our administrative process. Now, people are talking about concerning behaviors. Well, okay, so in addition to that, it talked about concerning, troubling, unwanted, distasteful, odd, bizarre, unwelcome, and uncomfortable. Now, I would argue that I've had all of those kinds of interactions with some of my fellow alders here, and you know this. But does that raise the level to censoring us? We have heated conversations all the time. They're uncomfortable. They're troubling. They're distasteful. I don't know about the odd and bizarre, but they certainly are unwelcome and uncomfortable. It's kind of like goes with the territory of what we do. We try to be respectful, but we get into heated conversations, which I've had several, and that's kind of what happens. So those behaviors, is that something that you really feel compelled to censor? You need to ask yourself this question. I've been a protected status investigator for over 30 years of my public service career in the state of Wisconsin, as well as Dane County. I'll also add that I've always lived in a female-dominated household. I have six sisters. Actually, I have five now. A week ago, one of my sisters passed away, and I have four daughters. So I take this issue of sexual harassment and domestic violence very seriously. So I don't want anybody to think that I don't. And I think my career has proven through all the investigations I've done that I take it seriously as well. But the facts are, the conclusions of that investigation did not sustain those allegations. And what that means is you have to do a fact finding. You have to determine facts. You start out with allegations, and then you have to determine the facts. And you have to have evidence to support those facts. Otherwise, that's what they are. They're allegations. Facts require witnesses or collaborating information to support them. And you know, I'm gonna tell you something. Oftentimes, we cannot support the allegations. It doesn't mean they are true, and it doesn't mean they are true. We can't support them with facts or collaborating information. And that's the process that we go through. So you gotta ask yourself, when someone goes through an investigative process and it's determined that the allegations are not sustained, as in this case, is it appropriate for us to penalize them? To censor them? Or worse, to remove them from committees? I think that's prejudicial, highly prejudicial. I probably could say some other things too, but I'm not gonna say that. But it certainly brings to question, why are you penalizing someone for accusations that have not been proven? In effect, you take away this alder's elected right to represent his constituents. See, ultimately, it's the voters that should determine whether Aldo Miyatsi should represent them or not. Now, we gotta ask ourselves, do we support our own process? Do we really believe in our own procedure or the rule of law? I mean, do we really have faith in our process? Because if we don't, what's the point of having it? We shouldn't even have it. If somebody's gonna go through this process, prevail through the process, and then you penalize them like they did not prevail, what is the point? What is the point? Now, the behaviors that was described beyond that, that no finding, are all behaviors that pretty much happen all the time. It's behaviors that we are all too familiar with. So this is an issue of, in my mind, of due process. And I'm gonna tell you another thing. I think the timing is curious too. I mean, let's think about this. The timing of this coming out. I've actually heard people threaten the alders who did not support this resolution that people are coming after us. Really? They're coming after us for upholding to the rule of law? Now, you could believe whatever you want to. You could choose to believe the person has committed these or they're not. But the fact of the matter is, our role in government, we have rules in this body. We have rules that we follow all the time. And if we're not subject to the rules that we follow, then it all becomes, "I don't like this person, so I'm gonna do a no confidence vote about him." You might not like my language. You probably don't like my tone. So does that mean I'm engaging in conduct that is unrepresented of an order? To who? Who's the judge? Oh, you guys are the judge now of what behaviors constitute appropriate or not. You know, it's the voters. We're subject to our constituents, and they know what to do if they don't like what we're doing. They can recall us or they could vote us out. So this vote of confidence? Okay, I get it. It's like, oh, we're gonna send a message. But you know, really? It's politically motivated. You're doing a political assassination of one of your co-alders, and none of you would like somebody to do that to you. Nobody would. It's not our job to judge each other. It's those residents, those citizens that we represent, they judge us, and they judge us at the ballot box. So anybody who wants to try to threaten me, you know, or do politicking up here, all of a sudden, I'm sorry. That's not appropriate. We come here. I know one thing about Charles is he does represent his constituents. That I can tell you. I don't know about his personal life. I don't hang out with him. I can't tell you how he interacted with women. That is not for me to determine. And you should focus on this investigation, our process, what our process determined and what it left us with. You start bringing in all this other stuff about who you believe and what. Well, you know what? People make statements, but you know what? Those statements are just allegations because they have not been investigated. They have not been investigated. It has not been determined that they are factual or they have been collaborated. So you need to deal with our process that we spent taxpayer money to go through. It made a conclusion, and we need to follow it, support it, and do what we're supposed to do. So every one of you who want to make this into an inquisition because that's what it's turning out to be, for whatever reason, you don't like Charles or you believe somebody else, that's fine. Believe them. And you're right. This is a process where it's just an opinion. So if you want to be... You know what the easy route is?
Alder Duncan, you're at 10 minutes.
I'm gonna finish what I have to say. I don't talk that much, but you can give me another minute to finish what I have to say. You know, that's the issue. It's easy to go along with this just to avoid some political prosecution. But have the guts to follow our process that we put in place, the rules that we put in place, and stick with it. So thank you, Ms. Mayor, for giving me a few extra seconds.
Thank you, Alder.
I'm sitting here listening to a lot of scurrying around the issue. I keep hearing, "This is a witch hunt." "This is... there are good people on both sides." And as a person of deep, abiding faith, a faith leader, I am sitting here saying to everyone here, including you, that we need to make sure people are held accountable, not because this is a legal body that's happening. This is not court. But what has been reported to us is a concerning pattern of behavior which is unbecoming of an alder. And for me, it comes down to that. This has been multiple people who have had these concerns and expressed them. And I have to work in an office and space with many of them, several of them, looking at their eyes, listening to their stories. And when I hear their stories, I believe them. Do you know why? Because I've been in that space. So we can talk about this being a legal body, but when it comes down to it, what this is is a censure for us to say, "We believe as a council that this is unbecoming of an alder." This is unbecoming behavior that has been said several times over many years. It's not out of the blue. All of a sudden, everybody came and said last week. This is a serious matter, and people's lives are impacted from it. And I am all about making sure that people have a chance to redeem themselves. And if somebody comes and says, "Hey, I'm willing to admit where I've made error and ask for a path forward," then we'll do that. But at this current stage, all I'm hearing are several people who came forth who are credible people, have been deemed credible by this investigation that we've had. They've been deemed credible. And we've seen a pattern of behavior that is concerning and unbecoming of an alder. I don't care who it is. That is not okay. And when my colleagues and people that work really hard for the city have to interact with that person when they have been harmed by that person, then that is the problem. And so I am going to support this because I believe survivors. And I believe that this process is merited and warranted. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Great. Alder Wahili for the second time on the question.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I just want to respond in reference to accountability. As per my earlier comment, in 2022, when the Code of Conduct was introduced, that particular alder was not held accountable. There was a complaint from the staff from this...
I'm sorry. Hold on, Alder.
Yes, because I'm bringing accountability as a body...
One of your colleagues has asked for a point of order, Alder. Alder Duncan? Point of order?
Alder from 2023 is not anything with this resolution. This resolution is on Charles Miyatsi.
Alder Wahili?
My reference is, Madam Mayor, is when we are holding ourselves accountable, who are we accountable to? And when are we accountable? So when there has been accusation in terms of harassment, hostile environment from the staff, from the community members, from other alders, and this body did not work on it or even... it or even respond to it, then we pick and choose who we want to punish, or who we want to choose to censor. That time, it was protecting a white man and not holding him accountable for what he did, for the staff, for the Alders, and for the community members. And if we are being fair and just, we should have a fair process for all of us. No one, and no one should be free and just, you know, you're okay, and it's too punitive to punish this person. I am not saying, and I'm not blindly supporting Alder Miyatsi. He has to be accountable for what he did. He has to look for help, seek for help. And I'm here to help the council any way or any means that I can to have a conducive work environment for all of us, for the staff, for the Alders, and for the community members. And I'm willing to take that promise that this should not happen again. If we acted on that resolution, today we will not have this discussion. Alder Miyatsi will not be here today because we could have held him accountable based on that resolution. It laid out significantly better in a way that everyone is accountable. So when we say accountable, let's reflect. Let's think about how we are reflecting and who we hold accountable to the community and to us. So that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a lot that I want to respond to over here because there have been, I don't think I've ever seen such a rewriting of history on this council floor ever before. There has been so much harm created, there has been so much harm created and put onto the speakers who have come up today, people who have had to re-traumatize themselves just to share their stories, and that is not what should have happened today. We've heard from multiple Alders today that this is not about due process, and I think that is bullcrap. If none of us cared about due process, or if I didn't care about due process, I would have introduced this back in April. But no, I waited until an independent investigation took place. But instead, when the investigation did take place and got publicized, we had Alders say, why wasn't the Alders part of this? You know, that's a great question. Why did we not have elected politicians sit on a committee to make decisions about another elected politician? I think that makes perfect sense to me. But that's the kind of response that many of the Alders who have spoken before me initially responded with. Another speaker said that just because we might not like their language or their tone, maybe we should introduce a censure resolution. And no, that's not the case. But if any of the Alders here engage in the behavior that we've seen from Alder Miyatsi, I will promise you, I will write another censure resolution. Because that is what this is about. This is about the pattern of behavior we have seen from Alder Miyatsi that is inappropriate and unethical, and that is indeed unbecoming of an Alder. That is what this is about. This resolution is about doing the right thing, which is putting out, this council stating that we believe that this conduct is wrong. I'll get to my actual speech now. I wrote this resolution, again, like I just said, because it is the right thing to do, and that is the only reason. This investigation found that Alder Miyatsi engaged in behavior that is unethical and inappropriate, and that is unbecoming of an Alder. He did not break the law, but I do believe he violated the trust placed in him by the City of Madison residents, and that is key. Elected representatives should be held to a higher standard, period. And we've seen that all day today. We've seen that residents have spoken and proven that they do not have trust in Alder Miyatsi, and that is also what this independent investigation found. This is most likely, I believe, going to be the most important vote that I take because this vote does set a precedence for the future and a precedence for accountability, which we have lacked when it comes to issues like this historically in this country. One of the previous speakers said this already, but there's a good chance that this happens again in the same body, and that is very unfortunate. But I'm hopeful that this censure is a step forward, as symbolic as it might seem, that it sets a precedence. I'm hopeful that this censure leads to a change in our state laws potentially, where this form of harassment is illegal, and we do have better form of justice instead of just a censure resolution. I'm hopeful that this resolution leads the council to updating our own policies. Just because Alder Bennett's ability to maintain a cordial relationship with Alder Miyatsi, that should not have been the detriment to this. Just because she was able to do that, the report found that there is no lawbreaking, and that just does not seem right to me, especially when Alders, like all of us, we are required to basically maintain a good relationship with everyone, regardless of our personal relationships with us, for the benefit of our constituents. The women who have spoken up against Alder Miyatsi over the past several months are some of the strongest people I have met. I have spoken to several of them over the past couple months, and they have so much courage and bravery that I will never have personally. But I believe it is so wrong that society has put them in a position to testify in front of a body such as ours in a public way, and they did it anyway. They spoke up in a way, each of them, they spoke up in a way that provides them the safety that they needed, even if speaking up invites being traumatized all over again. But as a man, I have the privilege to choose if I care about this issue, just because I'm a guy. And that's wrong, you know? The discussion of sexual harassment and workplace intimidation and all of that, it's one that society has deemed to be a woman's issue, and that is wrong. I disagree with that. I believe that men need to speak up. I believe we need to speak up early. It's the 21st century. And that also means that it is not racist to demand accountability. We have heard throughout the day today the implication that it is racist to introduce this censure resolution. Again, I disagree with that. I will say it again. The censure resolution was introduced because it is the right thing to do. The conduct by Alder Miyatsi is wrong and unbecoming of an Alder. That deserves to be called out, and that is what this resolution is. I am voting in favor of this because I believe Alder Miyatsi engaged in disgusting and unethical behavior. I encourage the other Alders to vote in favor of this because, again, it is the right thing to do. It is not political, it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox for the second time?
Thank you. Just want to remind people again, we talked about Alder Miyatsi's behavior was criticized and described as concerning, troubling, unwanted, distasteful, odd, bizarre, unwelcome, and uncomfortable. We really need to think about that a little bit. You know, those are probably, as I mentioned, behaviors when we get into heated conversations, that we do have unwelcome conversation and distasteful ones. I'm not trying to avoid the situation, but that's all we have here. Everything else is speculation, everything else are allegations, and if you want to get to the bottom of those allegations, they need to be investigated. And a lot of what people are telling me when I talk to them about this issue is, I believe this person, that's fine. Believe them then, and then you vote accordingly. But that doesn't mean it's evidence, and I don't think that if we get around to censoring each other based on what somebody said, then what do we have? What do we really have?
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett has called the question. There are three Alders in the queue yet again. Is there a desire to call the question and have a vote on that? Just a reminder, you have to have a vote on calling the question. It's not debatable, but there is a move and a second to call the question. So all those in-
Point of order.
Alder Harrington McKinney, point of order?
My point of order is that the process of addressing the chair was violated, and specifically, my name was called. You had recognized me as being in the queue before the question was called, and so therefore I should be able to express my response to you, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, Alder. Firstly, unfortunately, this council regularly violates the rule of addressing the chair, including using your colleagues' names. I do try and call it out, I'm not always successful, and I apologize for that. Secondly, the motion to call the question is unrelated to how many Alders are in the queue, or what has preceded that motion. It is a motion that can be made at any time and seconded, and if it is not withdrawn, the body needs to vote on it. I'm assuming there will not be unanimous consent to call the question. There is objection to calling the question. So all those in favor of calling the question, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. It's not debatable.
Alder Vidavir?
Aye.
Alder Wahili?
No.
Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Curry?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Field?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Figaroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Govindarajan?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Ughair?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Alder Harrington McKinney? Go on.
Alder Knox?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Latimer Burris has left. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Miyatsi?
No.
Alder Rumble is excused. Alder Tischler is excused. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes and two noes.
With fourteen ayes, the question is called, and we'll proceed to a vote. On item 92, censuring Alder Charles Miyatsi for conduct unbecoming of an Alder, it has been moved and seconded to adopt. All those in favor of adoption, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Vidavir?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Wahili?
Steen.
Steen. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Curry?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Field?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Figaroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Govindarajan?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Harrington McKinney has left. Alder Knox?
No.
No. Alder Latimer Burris recused herself earlier. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Miyatsi?
No.
Alder Revere?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I have thirteen ayes, two noes, and one abstention.
Thank you. With thirteen ayes, the motion will pass, and that will take us back to-